All right, we'll go ahead and get started. You can go, are you, um?
We have recorded, we're gonna go on Facebook right now.
All right, sounds good.
Your pleasure.
You can go ahead and move to, uh, Facebook. All right, we are live on Facebook. Um, we will, go ahead and get started. It is six thirty, um, for the common council regular meeting for today, Tuesday, February first. Um, first, um, I would like to call the meeting to order, um, with the pledge of allegiance and a moment of silent prayer. If you all would, um, stand for the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands
What it stands?
One nation, one God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right. Um, Ms. Nyle, we'll go ahead and get started on the roll call. I know that, um, Councilman Fitzpatrick is rebooting, so he may be joining. I see him here. So, um, Ms. Nyle up on the roll call.
Dabney.
Present.
Mr. Fitzpatrick.
Present.
Mr. Mack.
Here.
Ms. Deitch.
Here.
Mr. Don Presbleinsky.
Present.
Mr. Paul Presbleinsky.
Present.
Mr. Simmons.
Present.
Ms. Jagus.
Present.
And Ms. Tillman.
Present.
We have nine present and no one absent.
All right, and, um, just to clarify, I know there was a couple of emails that went back and forth before we get started. We are still under, um, the government's executive order and still have, um, our city executive order, so, um, we will follow the rules, um, as presented, um, by, uh, the state and, um, we can move forward, uh, with our Zoom meetings as such. Uh, once we're, um, away from the executive, um, order, um, things, we'll do another follow-up as far as, um, the way we do business. So with that being said, um, um, are there any, um, questions? Um, I need a motion for the approval of the minutes for our Zoom meeting on January eighteenth.
Motion to approve.
Score.
Are there any questions or changes or updates to the minutes? All right, Ms. Nyle up on the, uh, roll call.
Mr. Paul Presbleinsky.
Aye.
Ms. Tillman.
Aye.
Mr. Dabney.
Aye.
Mr. Fitzpatrick.
Aye.
Mr. Mack.
Aye.
Ms. Deitch.
Aye.
Mr. Don Presbleinsky.
Aye.
Mr. Simmons.
Aye.
And Ms. Jagus.
Aye.
We have nine in favor and no one opposed.
All right, thank you. Are there any reports of any standing committees? Any reports of any standing committees? Um, I will, um, just do a, a brief, um, report that we did, um, do a council workshop on, um, meetings, agendas, and just the, um, uh, proper procedures for, um, giving notice to the public. Um, and we held that, uh, about a week and a half ago. I don't have the date in front of me, but, um, the recording is out on Facebook, um, and if you want a copy of the presentation, you can contact the, uh, the, um, clerk's office. All right, with that being said, finance committee, um, Ms., uh, Councilwoman, um, Tillman.
Um, thank you, Madam Chair. Um, the finance committee meeting met on January twenty-eighth, twenty-twenty-two, um, to discuss the claims docket for February first, twenty-twenty-two, funds number two zero four two Riverboat Claims, nineteen thousand seven hundred eleven dollars and eighty-three cents. E F T zero funds number two zero three one Board Development zero E F T, one hundred twenty thousand dollars total claims, one thousand, I'm sorry, one hundred thirty-nine thousand seven hundred eleven dollars and eighty-three cents. Um, there were some, um, questions, um, during our finance committee meeting where we discussed, um, as of course, the, um, the monthly claims, um, and under our new business, we discussed the M V H and the local roads and street funds. Uh, the finance committee did not make any recommendations for these claims at that time due to that there were some questions in regards to funds two zero three one of the one hundred twenty thousand dollars for the special events. Uh, there was also questions in regards to the twenty funds twenty forty-two Riverboat in the amount of nineteen thousand seven hundred eleven dollars and eighty-three cents, which was for the purchase of a twenty nineteen two one zero zero C sidewalk snow vehicle. Also, um, in the discussions with the M V H and the local roads funds, um, there were some questions in regards to, um, the M V H and local roads where there was an actual, approximately a actual balance of five hundred ninety-three thousand dollars. Um, and it was questioned wanting to know if those balances would pay off the second matching funds for the community crossing grant. And that was discussed and explained by Controller Hoffmasters and with questions and concerns, uh, from Paul Pres, Councilman Paul Presbleinsky. There was also some other questions, um, that arose in regards to, um, the repayment of one of the grants, of the matching portion of the grant what has already been paid. So we have to make up, pay the difference of the grant, um, where we also had in attendance to discuss these questions and concerns was Yvonne Hoffmaster, City Controller, um, Angie Deitch Council, Bryant Dabney Council, Jeff Wright, City Engineer, and of course Caleb for I T. And it was a few other things that was brought up, um, and discussed. One of the other things was in regards to, um, Controller Hoffmaster addressed Barker Mansion transferring back to the Barker family and that there was little over four, four hundred thousand dollars of a cash balance at the end of the year and a resolution is needed from the council saying that these funds are dormant and these funds will go back to the general fund. Our meeting was adjourned, um, at twelve oh two P M. And again, um, in regards to any of the, um, explanations in depth detail, because there was a lot in, in our minutes, I also included, please refer to the, um, finance committee meeting that was held on January twenty-eighth, twenty-twenty-two, which can be seen at the La Porte County Access Channel. Thank you.
Sorry, I was, thank you. Um, are there, um, any, um, additional questions? Um, one thing, uh, I would like to add too is that, uh, we did receive some communications for, from Controller Hoffmaster and reference to those questions that you, um, uh, mentioned in, in the meeting, um, Councilman Dabney. And I'm, I'm gonna allow, it was a lot going on in that meeting, so I'm gonna allow any questions from the council at this time.
Yeah, real quick, I'm sorry. Do you recognize me?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Um, cause I know we, there was no recommendation because we needed additional information. And did you guys get that additional information if you needed or to make a recommendation tonight?
I did not, if, if I may, Madam Chair.
Yes, that's.
I, Madam President, I did not receive, um, any supporting documentation in regards to, um, the invoice for the S S V for the nineteen thousand seven hundred eleven dollars and eighty-three cents due to, um, Councilman Paul, um, Don Presbleinsky can elaborate on this due to that he is the one that had the conversations with Dan Landscaping and Lawn Service and with the mayor to where it was conveyed to me that the purchase of this, uh, merchant, uh, of this, uh, S S V was only gonna be for twelve thousand dollars and I questioned why was there approximately seven thousand dollars difference? Because the bill, the invoice that we had, that was presented to us did not indicate that. Nor did it indicate that it was for any special parts or accessories for the snowplow.
All right, thank you. So what we'll do is, um, we'll go on to the claims docket and then we'll ask, um, Controller Hoffmaster to provide any additional information at that time.
Madam President.
Yes, yes.
Yeah, if I may, cause I did have that discussion, uh, with the mayor and I did have it with Councilwoman Tillman. We spoke about it, uh, middle of last week, yeah, I think it was Wednesday we spoke about that. Uh, cause that's when I was out observing this new, uh, sidewalk plow that the, uh, the city purchased. And, uh, come to find out is that, uh, the way I understand, it was originally twelve thousand dollars, but the addition of the plow and the snow blower that goes along with this, uh, snowplow, that was, uh, additional. So that's why it's nineteen thousand dollars. You're paying for the, 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 the snowplow blade and the snow blower that comes with the device, the riding device of it. That's why it's nineteen thousand, okay? Uh, but i- if I, if I can ask a question now, uh, cause this has to do with the, uh, with the financing of, of this, uh, piece of equipment is, uh, and, and I know we bought it from Dan's Landscaping. Uh, I, I just wanna know that according to the, uh, city purchasing requirements for quotes and bids, that, uh, they're supposed to be, uh, per the rules for a small, a small purchasing, which also, uh, deals with capital equipment under fifty thousand dollars, uh, and in between twenty-five hundred and twenty-four thousand dollars is that, uh, the method that, that we must submit written solicitation with detailed specific specifications to at least two different vendors for a piece of equipment like that. Uh, I guess since the mayor's on, if I can ask him that question, if that was done or not, and the purchasing policy was followed, I'd like to know that.
Yes.
Uh, this is Mayor Perry. Uh, Councilman Don Presbleinsky, the purchasing policy was not followed. And I'll recount the incidents that led to that. I contacted Dan Carbine of Dan's Landscaping requesting to visit his shop to look at his snow removal equipment. He took me down, uh, through his shop. They've got an, he's got an enormous amount of, of removal equipment and as he was showing me this, it was a, a candid conversation that was off the cuff. He quoted, he said, "I will sell you this equipment for not a dollar more than I paid for it." He said, "That's about fourteen thousand." He didn't have the invoice with me. Didn't have the invoice with him. The equipment sat there with the snow blower attachment on it. The reason the price went up and the reason I bought it was because it was available twenty-four hours before we had expected a heavy snowfall. We had already priced equipment all the way up to the Wisconsin line around northwest Indiana. And because of the COVID situation, nothing was available. Right there, you and I at different times stood in front of a piece of equipment that we could have right there now to address our need. And I went ahead with it as an emergency purchase. We used some funds that were in place for vector control, lawnmowers, which, which we will replace before next spring. The reason the cost was nineteen thousand seven hundred dollars and some change is because a condition of buying it was that we took the blade that you mentioned previously, plus the maintenance equipment, fan belts, lubricants, uh, uh, extra parts that normally break. Dan required that we bu- we buy that with the snow blower or with the piece of equipment. So that's how the price ended up nineteen seven, because we, we have the, the snow removal piece of equipment. We have the blower, the blades, and we also have backup parts, uh, for replacement.
Awesome. Thank you for that explanation. Controller Hoffmaster, did you have something to add?
Um, yes, um, as the mayor said, we did have three quotes. And I am, I'm still pulling all of this together because this is also going to be on the agenda for the Board of Works meeting next week to, um, put this out there that it was an emergency purchase, that it was done because of the, um, impending snow and this was a piece of equipment that was available. So this will be going to the Board of Works with the quotes that I believe were anywhere from, I believe, around forty thousand up to seventy thousand dollars were the quotes that we had received earlier last year. Um, so I just wanted everybody to know that this is going to the Board of Works as per the policy for an emergency purchase.
Awesome. Thank you, Controller Hoffmaster.
Uh, Madam President, if I may add one thing?
Yes.
Um, when I, when I said we had no quotes, I misspoke. That wasn't a deception. We have been looking for snow sidewalks, snow removal equipment ever since Council Lady Tracy Tillman, her ordinance passed. We had no luck. So it wasn't like we had looked hard for a week and made this, made this decision. We, we have been searching for weeks. It's multiple quotes, but no availability. So we, we were, the quote, the purpose of getting the quotes was to figure out where we were at, what we were gonna have to pay for this. And then all of a sudden, because of my, my request and my visit, there's a piece of equipment sitting there with less than twenty hours on it that's ready to go. So that, that's, that's all Harley would say the rest of the story.
Thank you.
Uh, Madam Pre- Madam President, just one more request.
Yes.
From Controller Hoffmaster, I would like a copy of all the, uh, bid requests that were received on this type of piece of equipment from these other vendors that the city, uh, contacted. Thank you.
Of, of course, that'll all go out, um, um, probably whenever the, the clerk's office sends out the things for, for the Board of Works.
Mm-hmm.
Right, but I would like to have a copy of each one of the bids.
That's included in the package that we'll be sending to the Board of Works, yes.
All right, thank you. And, and lastly, um, we did receive an email from Controller Hoffmaster on yesterday that gave us a copy of the, um, section two dash four one one of chapter two that established a restricted non-reverting fund for the special events that was passed by, introduced by Councilman Bryant Dabney, and, um, it was filed August fifth of last year. So, um, just to give you the F Y I, we did receive that on yesterday. All right, moving on to the claims docket for approval for February first, twenty-twenty-two, we have fund twenty forty-two Riverboat, uh, claims for one, well, nineteen thousand seven hundred eleven dollars and eighty-three cents for the, um, the sidewalk plow, snow blower. And then we have fund twenty thirty-one, um, from the Boyd Development E F T for a hundred twenty thousand dollars for the special, um, events fund. Um, I would entertain a motion.
Motion to approve.
Motion by Councilman Don Presbleinsky. Second by Councilman Matt. Any additional questions? All right, all those in favor, oh, um, uh, Mrs. Nyle up on the roll call.
Ms. Tillman?
Nay.
Mr. Dabney?
Aye.
Mr. Fitzpatrick?
Nay.
Mr. Mack?
Aye.
Ms. Deitch?
Aye.
Mr. Don Presbleinsky?
Aye.
Mr. Simmons?
Aye.
Ms. Jagus?
Aye.
And Mr. Paul Presbleinsky?
Nay.
We have six in favor and three opposed.
All right, thank you, Ms., Mrs., Ms. Nyle. And what I will say is going forward, um, we'll do each one, each fund separately and vote for them cause there could be, I just thought about it, there could be, um, um, some, instead of grouping them together, we'll do them separately just in case, um, with these explanations, there's one fund that you support versus the other. So we will do that in the future. Um, are there any reports of special or select committees? Any reports of special or select committees? Um, reports of, um, city officers or departments? Um, just to, just to note, um, at the next council meeting, Councilman, I mean, uh, Chief, uh, Dion Campbell will be presenting the crime statistics um, at our next council meeting. Um, any reports of other city officers or departments?
I think, uh, um, I think Mayor Perry's trying to speak. He's muted.
Thank you, Councilman. Uh, I'd like to make a report, uh, regarding the upcoming heavy snowfall that is predicted for the information of council and the community. Uh, we had a meeting of all key department heads this morning at ten thirty. We laid out the emergency snow removal plan for the next, uh, thirty-six hours. We will, uh, starting tomorrow, the senior center will be closed and both lots one and two in Washington Park, which is the main parking lot in Fetter's Alley, will be closed until the snowfall is over. And we will commence, uh, we will have another meeting Thursday morning at eight thirty, uh, for the second snowfall. We're supposed to have back-to-back, uh, snowfalls and at that time we will, uh, uh, we're gonna move to main arteries first, secondary streets, then alleys, then sidewalks. Thank you.
Thank you. Any, um, other reports of city officers or departments? Yes, Mr. Wright.
Yes, uh, good evening. Uh, this is Jeff Wright, City Engineer. And as, uh, Ms., first of all, let me apologize. I just have absolutely no idea how to turn the camera on so you could see me, but, uh, as, uh, Ms. Tillman mentioned, uh, during her report, I attended the Finance Committee and, uh, tried to explain, uh, the best I could what happened with the, the C C M G grant. And, uh, I, I don't wanna hijack the meeting tonight, but, uh, and I would certainly like to, uh, explain in, uh, detail it if anybody wanted, uh, you know, to, uh, a detailed explanation. I could do that one-on-one with you. Uh, and then just to summarize and reiter- reiterate, the, uh, the grant is, that's entirely on my table and I missed a procedural detail. And, uh, Michigan City has to forfeit, uh, forfeit the, the funds of that grant. We were awarded that amount. But, uh, we didn't, uh, we didn't receive those. We won't be able to receive those. And so, uh, again, I, I humbly apologize. The, the fault was mine. And, uh, I had a conversation with, uh, Mayor Perry this afternoon. And, uh, he's willing to, uh, accept my resignation. But he thought, uh, it might be best to get a reaction from the council, uh, regarding that. Uh, like I mentioned, the error was mine and I apologize for it. And the only defense I have is up until, you know, that time, I, I think I've done a pretty good job for the city. Uh, and I do have some, uh, projects in mind for the future. But, uh, before anything gets, um, set in stone, uh, it would be nice to hear uh, from the council and to hear if you, uh, have a preference in the matter, uh, anyway. And, uh, if it's okay, I'll, uh, I'll just stop there and answer any questions any of you had. And, uh, I look forward to any, any comments you might wanna share.
President?
Thank you, Mr. Wright. I, I, I'll acknowledge you just a second. I'm Councilman Don. Um, thank you, Mr. Wright. Um, and I did see on the Board of Works agenda, um, some, that, that will be on the agenda, some, some items that put some, some internal controls, um, in place. So yes, Councilman Don Presbleinsky.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. Uh, Mr. Wright, uh, everybody makes mistakes. And there are things going on presently that I think are a lot more, uh, what you would wanna say, uh, volatile or disciplinary that aren't being looked at. Uh, I don't recommend that you resign, Jeff. Uh, all the dealings I've had with you have all been a hundred percent satisfactorily and everything, I think you're a great city employee. All right, you, uh, there was a mistake that you made. We all make mistakes. We've all been there. Uh, but I don't see the need for you to resign cause I don't think the city's gonna find another, uh, Jeff Wright in doing the work and getting a response from the city council members like I've gotten a response from you. Uh, you've always been there. You've done a hundred percent of what I've asked and we've gotten along great. So I do not wanna see you resign, Mr. Wright. Thank you.
Any, um, Councilman Bryant Dabney?
Real quick, uh, something that just came out, uh, this afternoon. I don't know if everybody had a chance to read it. Um, a resolution is gonna go before, for the works and then eventually it ended up coming back to the council. And there were some questions that were asked, uh, at the end of that resolution. It was an email attached that there still needs to be answers to those questions. So really, we don't have all the information. Um, so I won't be, you know, coming one way or another right now talking about whether somebody should resign. Um, but I do wanna stress the fact that I just recall, and I'm, I'm going back now to when our chief of police sent out and, uh, a message or, you know, a, a fundraising letter in order to raise funds for certain things that were happening at the police department. Uh, they wanted to raise funds. This city was turned on its head, uh, by him sending out a fundraising letter. And, um, this was, this ate up a lot of time and space in the newspapers, on radio, uh, talk shows and everything like that. People went on the radio talking about it. Um, he was excoriated pretty badly, uh, regarding sending out a fundraising letter. And now we have an instance where, you know, we're gonna be having, you know, three hundred and some odd thousand dollars that we'll need to cover to send back. But I just haven't heard that same kinda outrage, um, regarding that. But I do recall, you know, like I said, the chief of police was just out there sending out a fundraising letter and he caught, I'm not gonna say the word here in the council meeting, but he caught it for weeks. And, um, so, you know, I, I do wanna hear some of the same outrage and, but like I said, I'm not here to ask anybody to resign or anything like that. That is definitely an administration call. Um, but I do recall that, you know, when, when Chief Campbell sent out a fundraising letter, you know, it, it just, everything broke loose and, and we were going for weeks talking about that. And now we're gonna, gonna be on the hook as a city for three hundred thousand dollars plus. And I don't hear the same outrage. Um, we have people that will go up in arms with Yvonne Hoffmaster about not sending out a report talking about the balances of the Riverboat or the unappropriated balance, uh, the unappropriated balances that are left. You know, she forgets to send out a report and people go, hey, what? I hear about that, but I don't hear anybody now, you know, talking about this when we have actual three hundred some odd thousand dollars that we're gonna have to cover. So I just, you know, hope that we get some of the, you know, some of the same outrage that we have with those little bitty incidents that I've seen in the past. Um, if you can hear my voice getting a little bit more angry, I am. Uh, and the fact that, like I said, our chief of police, all he did was send out a fundraising letter and was excoriated about it. And, um, that's all I have to say, but I'm not here to ask anybody to resign or make a recommendation to anybody to resign. Um, and then, you know, we still have all the facts that need to be collected. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Dabney. Any other comments from any council members?
Madam President, if I may add an additional thought?
Um, just, just one moment. Let me make sure from the council, any additional council, um, comments?
Certainly. Certainly.
Yeah, yeah, Matt, um.
Yes, Councilman Paul Przybalski, yes.
Yeah, thank you. Uh, I, uh, I wanna say that Mr. Wright addressed the Finance Committee and, uh, explained it, all I thought was in, uh, detail of what hap- of what happened. And he, you know, there's, here's what I, here's what I have to give Mr. Wright credit for is that he admitted his mistake. Yes, we have to cover it, but also is like what Councilman Don Przybalski, uh, talked about, and I affirm that, is that Mr. Wright has always been upfront. He is always, he's a very knowledgeable individual when you talk to him about, um, roadwork or any type of construction dealing with the roads or, or other things in the community. Sewer, water, things like that. But the ma- the ma- I think what we should look, also, we, I don't think we should compare this with anything else. And the man admitted his mistake. The man has saved us a lot of money over the course of his employment with the city. And everybody should, or not everyone, but we should look at the fact that in one year, I believe, the city paid out over seven hundred thousand dollars to engineering firms for doing and overseeing pavement resurfacing in our community and doing, uh, pazer work. So I just gotta say that, I, I do not, absolutely not wanna see Mr. Wright resign or, uh, uh, have any disciplinary action taken upon him. I think that his, affirming his mistake and not running from a mistake shows the depth of his character. And I think that we should all appreciate that. And Mr. Wright, I appreciate that very much. It, it shows me a lot about your character. Thank you very much.
Yes, thank you, and, um, I, I will, I'll make a comment here, um. I, I just don't believe it's up to the council to deal with resignations for the administration. Um, and I know that we had several conversations in the Finance Committee and, uh, and I've talked to Mr. Wright and, um, again, I, I just don't think that's, um, a matter, just like what before. Um, that was the administration's, um, dealings with, with Chief Campbell and how he handled it. Um, I didn't appreciate how it was handled, but I think that it's still all administrative. Um, it's up to the mayor to make those determinations on his staff. Uh, Mayor, um, you have some additional, um, comments?
Yeah, thank you, Madam President. I just wanted to share with the council, uh, my thoughts on this. Mr. Wright and I talked several times today. Uh, I never knew Mr. Wright before. I interviewed him and hired him as our city engineer. He was recommended to me. And, uh, I made the suggestion, I did not direct, uh, Mr. Wright to resign. And I would not, I would not fire Mr. Wright because that would cast a, a bad shadow on his future. The reason I threw resignation out for his consideration is because of my experience in the private sector, a mistake of that amount would immediately cost a person his job. But it was a, it was a, even the suggestion was an extremely difficult decision to make because, because the loss of Mr. Wright as our city engineer would be truly a loss to Michigan City. In his, in the two years that he's been on our team, he has saved the city over a million dollars in design costs by doing the design in-house. Uh, the mistake that Mr. Wright made was from inexperience. He has not worked for government before, he's worked as a contractor to government in the county and was made because of his energy and ambition. He is probably one of the most ambitious people that I've met. He also, in addition to saving the city over a million dollars in engineering costs, he recently came up with a plan that he consulted another professional engineer on. A plan to take the underground installation that's there, that's a part of the Lafayette Barker Storm Sewer that's nothing more than empty pipe buried in the ground. We've got more than just the seventy-eight inch section in the central part of town, we've got other sections. And Mr. Wright came up with a plan to take that, take the other sections, tie them into the seventy-eight inch section, tie that into a thirty-inch line that has an outfall in the immediate vicinity, which would have taken that thirteen million dollar price tag to, that's projected to finish the Lafayette Barker Stormwater System and put a major part of the system active.
I appreciate that, Mayor, um, but this, we're, we're not, um, we're, we're not in a, a trial or anything for Mr. Wright.
I'm just saying that with, for six hundred thousand dollars, we could have taken care of that thirteen million dollar project. And I, and, and that's, that's really important. I just wanted the council's thoughts, thank you.
Thank you for that, and, uh, like I said, I look forward to the Board of Works meeting and getting those questions answered from the, uh, email that was sent out. All right, Mrs. Nylo, on, um, do we have any petitions? Ms. Nylo?
We have no petitions.
And communications?
Correspondence was received in the Clerk's Office on January eighteenth from Harris Law Firm PC regarding this letter of interest to serve as a Michigan City Common Counsel Attorney. Correspondence was received on January twenty-first from Gidget Griffin regarding the Gun Violence Prevention Committee. Correspondence was received in the Clerk's Office on the twenty-first from City Controller Hoffmaster regarding the available funds in the MBH and local road, street funds. Correspondence was also received on January twenty-fifth regarding staffing issues at Washington Park Zoo. Correspondence was received, um, in my office on January twenty-sixth from Mr. Rodney McCormick regarding the request to change the social status of African-American males organization representative for their Commission for Ministerial Association to Northwest Indiana Ministers Association. Correspondence was also received on the twenty-fifth from Pastor Kimberly Williams regarding serving on social status of African-American Males Commission, representing Northwest Indiana Minister Association. And that's it.
All right, thank you, um, Ms. Nylo. And, um, I know several of these items may come up in council comments. Um, I know there is an executive session, um, in reference to, um, the Harris Law Firm, uh, on February third at six P M. And you all should have received that. And, um, again, the MBH funds were addressed at the Finance Committee meeting. Um, I know that Councilwoman Ziegus will talk about the Washington, um, Park Zoo, I believe. And then, um, Councilwoman Tillman with the social status. All right, um, our first resolution, um, for the evening, Ms. Nylo.
Resolution by title only, amending resolution number four-seven-three-seven, authorizing petty cash and cash change funds. And this is introduced by Ms. Ziegus.
All right, does the sponsor have any comments?
Oh, yes, this is just simply to give each of the entities listed enough change so they don't have to keep running back and forth. If anyone's worked at retail, you know the frustration of not being able to give change to people. So, uh, this is just upping the amounts and then removing Barker Mansion because they are no longer under our, our control. So this just basically changes how much petty cash they have, the counting has to be the same as usual and, uh, you know, Ms. Hoffmaster will verify that everything is in the up and up.
Thank you. Are there any comments from the public? Any comments from the public? Or, um, comments from Controller Hoffmaster at this time? All right, comments from the council? Yes, Councilman Don Przybalski?
Yeah, uh, question to the, uh, author, Councilman, Councilwoman Ziegus. Why, uh, for the Park Department, the Washington Park Parking, why, uh, why do they have a seven thousand dollar beginning balance?
Uh, well, when I talked to Shannon earlier, earlier, she said something like they have to keep giving out change because of the fifteen dollars, they, they need fives, they need lots and lots of fives. And there's nothing worse for those people who are working at the gate to be stranded and not to have a five. So I think she did a calculation on how much change they get. They, I think they go over three thousand dollars a day in fives. So I think they're just trying to have enough money so that they can not be stranded without cash because, you know, Horizon Bank closes at noon on Saturday. And so what are they gonna, you know, do to get more, more change? So that's just simply a thing to get change.
Thank you.
All right, any additional questions from the council? This is a resolution, so it will need a motion.
Motion to approve.
For, uh, by Councilman Don Przybalski and support by Councilman Brian Dabney? Okay, uh, Ms. Nylo on the roll.
Mr. Dabney?
Hi.
Mr. Fitzpatrick?
Hi.
Mr. Mack? Mr. Mack?
Hi.
Uh, Ms. Deich?
Hi.
Mr. Don Przybalski?
Hi.
Mr. Simmons?
Hi.
Ms. Ziegus?
Hi.
Mr. Paul Przybalski?
Hi.
And Ms. Tillman?
Hi.
We have nine in favor and no one opposed.
All right, thank you, um, uh, Ms. Nylo. Um, the next, uh, resolution by title only.
Resolution by title only, approving the one-year performance guarantee savings report from Energy System Group ESG. And this is introduced by Mr. Don Przybalski.
Yeah, if I may, uh, Madam President, I'd just like to read it real quick verbatim, it's not very long, just so everyone has a good idea of what this is all about. 'Cause I know there's some new council members that have never dealt with, uh, ESG. But anyway, uh, whereas on November twentieth, twenty eighteen, the Common Council on behalf of the City of Michigan City approved a guaranteed savings contract with ESG to install and construct numerous improvements to city facilities to improve their energy efficiency and operations. And whereas the city, the council approved an amendment to the ESG contract to add solar panel installations at several city facilities to the project. And whereas, under the terms of the ESG contract, including the event amendment thereto, ESG guaranteed a level of energy and operational savings would result from implementation of the project as amended. And whereas, as required by its contract, on or about June thirtieth, twenty twenty-one, ESG submitted its report verifying that the annual guaranteed energy and operational savings amounts for the project for the first year after final acceptance of the project by the council were achieved. And whereas, the city engineer has reviewed the ESG report and on January first, twenty twenty-two, submitted to the city council in his written determination, a copy of which is attached heretofore as Exhibit A, that the report showed that the first year savings the city experienced from the project met ESG's contractual guarantee and recommended that the city council accept the report. And then we have the, uh, the now, now therefore be resolved, the city council of Michigan City that the aforementioned whereas sections are incorporated herein as a fully set forth and it approves ESG. Year one performance guarantee savings dated June thirtieth, twenty twenty-one. Thank you, that's it in a nutshell, right there.
Thank you.
Yeah?
Any comments from the public? Any comments from the public? All right, comments from the council?
Motion to approve.
Uh, we do have a comment from Councilwoman, um, Dahlia Ziegus, and we'll take the motion.
Okay, I'm sorry, uh, I just wanna know, how many years of, of reports do they guarantee that we're gonna be saving money? I mean, is this like a five-year process, a seven-year process?
Uh, I, I, I believe, if memory serves me right, this is gonna be a, uh, at least a fifteen-year project, yeah. Yeah, it's gonna be a fifteen-year project guaranteed to hopefully save, you know, a million dollars, you know, a year, uh, in the performance of this, yeah.
Thank you.
Yep.
Thank you, and, um, I'll entertain that motion from Councilman Gene Simmons? Yes.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Madam Chair?
Yes, um, Councilman.
I have a question on, uh, the amount of savings that, uh, Councilman Don Przybalski just put forward. I thought that this, uh, uh, endeavor was, uh, financed by a bond issue in that the savings would pay for itself over the term of the bond issue, not, uh, that we're gonna save them. You, you just made a statement that we're gonna save a million dollars a year. That was, uh, supposedly a million dollars over the life of this, uh, contract, correct?
Well, and, and the, this, uh, project was not financed over a, uh, a bond issue. Uh, I believe it was, it was, uh, financed through Riverboat Funding.
Oh, okay. So is that savings, was there any language put in there that the savings every year would go back into the Riverboat Fund?
I would have to check that agreement, uh, and then get back to the councilman.
All right, well, the reason I bring that up is that we need, if we're saving money, then we should have some kind of resolution to put that money back in the Riverboat Fund. Just like, and, and I'll elaborate on that later on some other items, thank you, Councilman.
Hello, this is Jim, may I speak?
Yes, Tony Meyer.
Uh, number one, the project was not funded by Riverboat Funds. It was funded by two low-interest, uh, loans from a subsidiary of Bank of America. Uh, number two, I believe, Don, is, it was either fifteen or eighteen years over which this loan would be uh, paid back, it actually is two loans because another one was added at the time of the amendment. And then number three, the guarantee, uh, amount, and I, it's not a million dollars a year. I don't recall off the top of my head what it is, but it, that amount is, uh, number one, it's not cash, you know, they don't give you a check. But in any event, the amount that the city saves would be sufficient to cover the cost of paying those loans, the principal and interest on those loans over the period of time that we're talking about. That's the concept behind this project. And that, I don't know if any of you read that report, you know, I know it's like eighty pages. But it's, um, it gave a great deal of detail about where the savings were and how they calculated the savings and, and they don't calculate dollars and cents in the sense of looking at the, uh, city's bank books. They look at the amount of energy and their operational savings in time, meaning hours or kilowatt-hours or gallons of fuel, uh, and then extrapolate dollar savings from that.
Thank you, Mr. Meyer. Any additional questions from the council? Any additional questions? All right, um, Mr. Simmons, would you still like to make the motion?
Motion to approve.
Definitely.
We have a motion by Councilman Gene Simmons, second by Councilman Don Przybalski. Um, uh, Ms. Nylo on the vote.
Mr. Fitzpatrick?
Hi.
Mr. Mack?
Hi.
Hi.
Ms. Deitch?
Hi.
Mr. Don Presibulinski?
Hi.
Mr. Simmons?
Hi.
Ms. Jagus?
Hi.
Mr. Paul Presibulinski?
Hi.
Ms. Tillman?
Hi.
And Mr. Dabney?
Hi.
We have nine in favor and no one opposed.
All right, thank you, um, Ms. Nyla. Um, next resolution by title only.
The resolution by title only approving submission of application for a grant for the City of Michigan City for the U.S. Economic Development Administration and supporting the local match for said grant. And this is introduced by Ms. Deitch.
All right, and I, I, I would like to relinquish the chair, uh, to Councilman Don Privalinski, um, for this resolution.
Uh, go ahead, Madam Chairman.
All right, uh, so this, this resolution here, um, is, and I'm just gonna, I'm not gonna read the whole thing in its entirety. Um, but this is, uh, for a grants, a, a grant application seeking fund, funding through the EDA, the Economic Development and Administration for the extension of infrastructure, um, of water and sewer to the 2020 Annex Park beyond the east side of the city. And Michigan City is requesting a commitment to match 20 to 50% of the project cost that is estimated to be at 1.4 to 3.5 million dollars and assurance the funds will be committed to this project available and encumbered. In the resolution, um, if you look at items one through eight, uh, it talks about the grant and who will be responsible for, uh, managing the grant. It will be Controller Hofmaster, um, through, uh, assistance with Baker Tilly. Um, the money would, um, you know, it says depending on which grant is accepted by the EDA will determine that the match is 20% or 50% of the project cost. And ARPA and/or Riverboat Funds could be considered for this grant match. And, um, one thing I would like to say is that, um, the next, all of the next, um, items are gonna be financial. Um, and I don't plan to speak on them, but for this particular one, um, I think it's a good way to leverage, um, funding, um, by going through, going through economic development, um, through the EDA to secure some funding, um, but to also be able to leverage other pots of money. So, um, I just wanted to make sure that everybody understood, um, that these are monies that we can use and that municipalities use to leverage to get infrastructure, water and sewer. Um, this isn't something new, but, um, we have two opportunities, um, with the, uh, the American Rescue Plan Act Economic Adjustment Assistance, that's an 80-20 grant, or the Economic Development Administration Public Works Assistance Grant, and that's a 50-50 grant. Thank you, um, um, Mr. Chair, uh, Councilman Privalinski.
I have a question, uh, on this grant.
Before we do that, we gotta go to the public.
Oh, yes, okay, sorry.
Sorry, my, uh, sorry. Um, so any, um, um, anybody from the public like to speak on this resolution? Controller Hofmaster, do you have anything else to add?
Um, no, not at this time. I can try and answer any questions that come up, but you, um, explained that very well. Thank you.
All right, any, um, comments from the council?
Madam Chair?
Yes.
If, if, if me?
Yes.
Um, on this application for this grant, which one are you looking at here? Uh, because you also mentioned the ARP infrastructure, uh, money and is that, you said that's a 50% match, so is there an application going out on that, uh, money also? So we're gonna make a determination of what we're gonna get?
So they're both, they're competitive, um, and so there's two. And so the, the, there's two different ones. It's the Economic Development Administration, um, uh, American Rescue Pla- Plan Act Economic Adjustments, Adjustment Assistance that I hope that we would get. That's an 80-20 grant match. And the other one is the, the one that we normally, um, go for or that, um, cities use is the 50-50 grant. And that's the, eh, the EDA Public Works Assistance Grant. That's 50-50. And, um, Controller Hofmaster, would you like to add something to that? I may have messed that up.
Um, no, no, you didn't mess it up. Uh, as it was explained to, um, when we did a, um, Zoom with, um, the EDA Clarence Hulse and Baker Tilly, as the EDA explained it to us, we can submit an application. And what they do is if they find that it doesn't fit in one of them, they'll move it to some other place. What this does is just gives us a broader, um, spectrum, you know, and a better chance of, of winning some funds. Um, we, we are looking for a, a February 28th deadline to get all of the documentation to them, which is quite substantial, which is, which is why we have commissioned Baker Tilly to, um, help us. So this is one of the steps. This is, um, a resolution from the, from the Common Council is required as one of, as one of the grant documents that we need to submit.
When, uh, when you, if I may, Madam Chair?
Yes.
Can I have a follow-up question?
Yes.
When will we find out on this grant submission, is it, uh, do they have a deadline by, or when they, they award? Is it in the, in the, uh, grant application? That's what I would like to know.
Um, we, we were told it was anywhere from six to 10 months that we would be notified, um, if, if we were going to receive any funds.
And the deadline for the grant is March 31st. That's all full documentation, um, for, for the grant.
Okay.
Stated in the, um, resolution.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions? Yes, Councilwoman Ziegus.
Yes, I think anytime there's an opportunity to get a grant, especially an 80-21, I'm all for it. We need to get the sewer out to the east side of the town, so I'm very much for it. And I would like to move to a dub.
All right, we have a, a motion from Councilwoman, uh, Dahlia Ziegus. Um, yes, uh, Councilman.
Wait a minute.
I, I have a question.
Yes.
Madam President, yeah.
Yes, Councilman.
You got a motion and support.
And we still can accept even after motion is a second, we can still.
You can still re, uh, accept comments.
Yes.
Okay, uh, so the, the city's requesting a commitment of a 20 to 50% match of the project, which is supposed to be 1.4 to 3.5 million dollars. And so what, where is the city gonna find their financing? What, how's the city gonna finance this project?
If you look in number, um, six, it, it says depending on which grant is accepted, um, ARPA and/or Riverboat Funds could be considered. So sounds like the two buckets of money that the city would like to, administration would like to consider are from those two buckets.
Okay, thank you.
We had, before, um, Councilman Paul, before I, um, missed it, it was Councilman Dahlia Ziegus who made the, the motion. Did someone second it?
Yeah, I did.
Okay, thank you. And you got a comment?
Yes, I want to remove my second.
Okay.
Because the, the question that I have that is a burning question for me is that I, I believe that we, uh, should, uh, also consider using TIP money out there since it's going to a TIP district and one TIP district can loan money to another TIP district. And that's not in the resolution. Thank you. That, that's what we need to consider because of the amount of money and the pie on dividing that money, uh, responsibility up because of all of, all of the opportunity that's out there with monies that we have. Thank you.
Thank you. We have a motion and we don't have a second.
Support.
All right, Councilman Mack had his hand up to support it. Um, any additional comment? All right, uh, Ms. Nyla on the, on the roll call.
Matt?
Hi.
Ms. Deitch?
Hi.
Mr. Don Presibulinski?
Hi.
Mr. Simmons?
Hi.
Ms. Jagus?
Hi.
Mr. Paul Presibulinski?
Nay.
Ms. Tillman?
Hi.
Mr. Dabney?
Hi.
And Mr. Fitzpatrick?
Hi.
We have seven in favor and two opposed.
All right, thank you, Ms. Nyla. Um, next, um, resolution by title only.
A resolution, um, by title only determining that funding for certain outstanding purchase orders should be encumbered and authorizing the city controller to encumber such funds. And this is introduced by Ms. Deitch.
All right, are there any comments from the public? Any comments from the public on this one? All right, comments, um, uh, actually comments from the public. Controller Hofmaster, would you, um, please elaborate on, on this resolution?
Um, certainly, thank you. Um, these are the, um, encumbered purchase orders from the ARPA funds that we encumbered from the, uh, money that the council allocated last year in the ARPA fund. And there are two riverboat purchase orders also on here. One of them is, um, the legal for the esplanade that the council appropriated last year for 175,000. And the other from the riverboat is, um, two Hassan Associates, which is one of the engineering contracts that the council approved last year for $25,000. So the total, um, amount we're asking to encumber is $1,959,714.2. This is also a requirement from the DLGF that we have a resolution from the council, um, showing the purchase orders that, um, that, that we encumber.
Thank you, um, Controller Hofmaster. And there was an Exhibit A that was attached to that resolution that had a list of all the, um, encumbered, um, items. All right, questions from the council? Yes, Councilman Bryant Dabney?
Um, I'm just looking at the list of the, you know, the POs that we're encumbering here. And I'm looking at the MCPD fleet vehicles, 416,000. It seems like that was done a long, long time ago. We're still having to encumber for that? That hasn't been paid out? That hasn't been executed? What? Do we have a answer to that?
Um,
It seems like that's taken a long time.
The, the first lease we did was from the Police Department's Operating Fund. That was executed, I believe, late spring. And we received those vehicles, I believe, uh, late summer, early fall. This is, these are eight additional vehicles that, um, the council approved in the ARPA plan.
And when did that, I'm sorry, when, when was that approved?
When it was, when was it approved?
Yeah, I'm sorry, I, I know that's hard to.
November.
The resolution was approved, um, late September, early October. And then the additional appropriation was I think we did these at the same time. It was like late October, we, um, the additional appropriation was, um, was passed by this council.
Yeah, it was either the second meeting in October or the first meeting in November.
Correct.
Oh, the order hasn't been, or, or has the order been made?
Right, yes, we, um, we're in the process of receiving the vehicles, um, basically as we speak.
What?
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions from any other council members? Yes, Councilman.
Yeah.
Councilman Don Privalinski.
Uh, yeah, so the, the uncovered funds here that we're gonna be paying out, is this coming from the general fund? Because they're already encumbered? Where, where's this money gonna be coming from?
Um, they're coming from the ARPA fund. So that, that was the plan that the council appropriated, um, either the last meeting in October or the first meeting in November. And then there are two of them coming from the riverboat. And that's from the 2021 budget that, that the council passed in the fall of 2020.
Which two are coming from the riverboat?
The, the, um, legal one, um,
Hassan Associates.
Hassan, they're the last two on the list. Um, Clark Quinn, Moses Scott and, and Gronn for 175,000. That's the legal counsel, uh, for the esplanade. And then Hassan Associates was one of the engineering contracts. And they're in the, they're, um, in the process of working on a project with, um, uh, city engineer, Mr. Wright.
Thank you. Um, Councilman Paul Privalinski, did you have a, a comment?
Well, I, uh, I, uh, wondered about, when I, you know, I wondered when I saw that list, uh, you know, we're doing all this, um, funding mechanisms and maybe we're putting a cart before the horse because, uh, we're gonna be asked to, which I feel relates to this, on the, uh, car purchases that we're gonna be asked, uh, I, I just heard on the news today that the county council is sending document, uh, communication to all the, uh, taxing entities on getting a position on the, uh, tax that they're proposing for public safety. And, uh, I, uh, I know that that won't generate anything for a couple of years. But we need to, we need to look at what we're doing with all the money and, um, can this money be, uh, if we, if that does pass, can this money that we allocate out of the ARP money, can it be regenerated back into the ARP fund to pay for other things? Is there, is there such a mechanism as that?
I'd like Controller Hofmaster, um, if she has an answer for that, if money can be, or Jim, um, taken from ARPA and we be replenished.
Okay, thanks.
Yeah, I, I'm not sure about that. That, that's something I would have to inquire on. I do know that if we had spent money someplace else before we appropriated the ARPA funds, we could replenish that, but I don't know if it goes the other way.
Can you check with Baker Tilly?
Yes, I will. I will, I will send that out first in the morning.
Hello?
Yes, Tony Meyer.
Yeah, if it's not spent, which is what I think, uh, Councilman Privalinski is saying, if it's not spent, it stays in the ARPA fund. This is just authorized it to be spent. If it's not spent, it doesn't go anywhere.
Well, right, the, I guess the, I guess the issue that I have is, uh, um, we're looking at doing this and we're gonna have money to replenish the mu, we might have money to replenish it. So that's why I'm brought that point up that, uh, no one can, no one can say it was never brought up, that, um, I, I think we need to look at how much money we have and what we're doing with our monies all the time. Thank you very much, Jim, and Yvonne.
Thank you. Um, any additional comments from the council? This is a resolution, so any additional.
Motion to approve.
Move. So first by Councilman, uh, Bryant Dabney, second by Councilman Don Privalinski, uh, Ms. Nyla on the vote.
Ms. Deitch?
Aye.
Mr. Don Prozabulinski?
Aye.
Mr. Simmons?
Aye.
Ms. Jacobs?
Aye.
Mr. Paul Prozabulinski?
Aye.
Ms. Tillman?
Aye.
Mr. Dabney?
Aye.
Mr. Fitzpatrick?
Aye.
And Mr. Mack?
Aye.
We have nine in favor and no one opposed.
All right, thank you, Ms. Nyle. Um, last resolution by title only.
A resolution by title only transferring the unused and unencumbered balance in the Barker Civic Center Fund two oh seven oh to the general fund and closing the Barker Civic Center Fund two oh seven oh, and this is introduced by Ms. Deich and Mr. Dabney.
All right, does the sponsors have any, um, comments?
Want to go, or you're there? Oh, I go first.
I'm not, I don't have any comments.
All right, um, this is pretty simple. All we're doing is, uh, going to be shifting funds that we had in the, uh, Barker Civic Center Fund. Uh, nothing else is, is coming out of that account. The account is laying dormant, and, and so now we're ready to put those funds back into the, the general fund uh, uh, for the city, uh, in the amount of four hundred eight thousand and some change there, so that's what this is simply doing. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Dabney. Any comments from the public? Any comments from the public? All right, comments from the council? Any comments? Yes. Yes.
Um, I have a question for Yvonne. Uh, what exactly, was this in a a building fund there, or, and how long was this money sitting there? Because it amazes me that almost a half a million dollars was, was sitting in a fund down there and just sitting there. Because I know that we, we would spend, uh, over a hundred thousand every year for staffing and things of that nature down there, but was this some leftover money from a building project down there when we were in charge of the building?
Um, no. This, this was the Barker Civic Center Operating Fund. This, um, paid the salaries of the employees there and, and the, um, supplies needed, um, for the daily maintenance of, of the house. Last year in jail, or I, I'm sorry, um, yeah, I think it was last year, the, um, Barker family requested that, um, we requested the house be returned to them, but in preparing the budget, we, we prepared their operating budget as we have since, I believe it was nineteen sixty seven-ish, maybe, I don't remember the exact year, that, um, the city, um, you know, started maintaining the house. So because we funded the operating budget, um, for their roughly half million dollar budget, so the funds were put in there to fund that, and, and now because we did not operate the house last year, these funds are all left over, so they got tax dollars in there, um, which I believe that was the only revenue they received last year, where the, the tax dollars from the tax rate that, that was given this fund when we, um, when we prepared the, the twenty-twenty-one budget.
So you're, so you're telling me that they had a, uh, they didn't have a levy to put that money in the fund, did they?
Yes, they did.
Oh, they did?
That's, that's, that's how we, that's how the city operated the mansion was with the tax levy.
Yes, and we also gave, uh, yes, and every year we gave them an allocation, I thought, to run their staffing in over a hundred thousand dollars, so you're telling me that this has been laying there for X amount of years? Because I don't remember giving them a half million dollars a year.
No, no, this money is there because we did not expend their operating budget last year. But we funded it.
Okay, thank you. Any additional questions, um, Councilman Privileg-, uh, Paul?
No, I'm just trying to figure out how that money was laying there. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Paul Provalinsky. Any other, um, comments from the council? And this is our last resolution. Any other comments from the council?
I'd like to make a motion to approve.
All right, we have a motion by Councilwoman Jacobs.
Aye.
Second by Councilman, uh, Don Provalinsky. Ms. Nyle up on the vote.
Mr. Don Prozabulinski?
Aye.
Mr. Simmons?
Aye.
Ms. Jacobs?
Aye.
Mr. Paul Prozabulinski? Mr. Paul Prozabulinski? I think we lost him. Um, Ms. Tillman? Mr. Dabney?
Aye.
Mr. Fitzpatrick?
Aye.
Mr. Mack?
Aye.
And Ms. Deich?
Aye.
We have eight in favor and no one opposed.
All right, I think he's having some difficulties. All right, uh, Ms. Nyle, first ordinance, um, first reading.
An ordinance on first reading by title only, creating section two dash three two seven in the Michigan City Municipal Code to be known as the policy and procedure for declaring bad debt uncollectible, and this is introduced by Ms. Deich.
All right, are there any comments from the public? On this ordinance? Any comments from the public? All right, I will ask, uh, Control Hoffmaster to, uh, provide some, some, uh, information on this, this, um, policy change.
Okay, thank you. This is, um, we need, uh, before we can write off outstanding invoices, we needed to have a bad debt policy. So, um, that's what this ordinance is doing. It's creating a, a section in the Muni Code and, and creating the policy to write off a bad debt. Um, one of the things that, that we've been looking at are mowing fees that have been done over, I, I believe some of these are like ten years old, and we're, they're just sitting out there on the books, and we can't do anything with them until we have a policy. So, um, you know, in accordance with the State Board of Accounts regulations, we needed a policy, so, um, with Amber's assistance, we drafted this, um, to, to get this policy in the Muni Code, and, and then we can clean up some of these old outstanding invoices that, that we, um, have reasonable belief that they will never be paid, since some of them go back, I believe, to like two thousand twelve.
All right, thank you, Controller Hoffmaster. Questions from the council? Or comments from the council? Yes, Councilman Bryant Dabney.
Just real quick, I want to be added as a co-sponsor.
All right. Ms. Nyle, you have that to add, Councilman Dabney to as a co-sponsor.
I'll do that.
Uh, Council President?
Yes.
Yeah, I'd like to also be added as a, uh, co-sponsor.
All right, Councilman Paul Provalinsky is addition. All right, thank you. Any other comments?
I think that's Councilman Don Provalinsky.
Yep, Don.
Yeah, I thought, I heard you say Paul, Don.
I probably did.
Yeah, that's all right.
Councilman Don.
Just keep it straight, that's all.
Any additional comments? All right, this will be held over for second reading. Uh, Ms. Nyle, um, second ordinance on first reading.
An ordinance on first reading by title only, creating section two dash three two six in Michigan City Municipal Code to be known as the capital asset policy, and this is also introduced by Ms. Deich.
All right, are there any comments from the public? Any comments from the public? And Controler Hoffmaster, I ask that you, I see your hand up. You provide some, some background on this one as well.
Sure, I was trying to, to beat you to the line there. Um, what this is, is we, we currently have a capital asset policy, but felt that it needed to be in the Muni Code also, and the current policy that we have needed to be updated with, um, ju- just some of the new rules and regulations, um, that the State Board of Accounts has put into effect. So what this does is just outline, um, the capital asset policy. It, um, states useful life of, of different types of assets. Um, it, you know, defines the asset categories, and it, um, also has a section in there on, um, of a policy for inventory.
Awesome. Thank you, Controller Hoffmaster. Any que- any comments from the, the council? I think, um, I saw Councilman Don, I mean, Councilman Bryant Dabney.
Yeah, just want to be added, added as a co-sponsor.
All right, we have Councilman Dabney added as co-sponsor. Any other, um, comments from the council? All right, this will be held over for second reading at our next council meeting. Ms. Nyle, um, third ordinance on first reading.
Ordinance on first reading by title only, approving additional appropriation in the budget of the Park Concession Fund for the Zoo Big Cat Exhibit Expansion Project, and this is introduced by Ms. Jacobs.
All right, does the sponsor have any comments?
Um, yes, I do. Um, I actually have two ordinances coming up relating to the zoo, and I prepared just a few slides to explain to people kind of a little bit about what's going on with the money, so I think Caleb's going to put those up. All right, great.
And, and, uh, when you do that, um, uh, Councilwoman Jacobs, just make sure that you submit those before noon on Wednesday to the, so that the council can have those in the future.
Well, this is, these are excerpts from the packet you got last week.
All right, thank-
Nothing new. Nothing new on here. I'm just highlighting some points because it was a multiple-page packet. I think they were like twelve pages. So these are directly from it, top-in, based in.
Awesome, thank you. I just want to make sure that when we're sharing documents that I know in advance.
Okay, so yes, this is, I, I can tell you the page number if I go back to my document, but, uh, this is just showing what is going on with the, uh, zoo attendance versus, you know, time. So back in the year two thousand, you know, as you see, we had ten full-time positions at the zoo, and the attendance was sixty-six thousand. And as the years went on, the employees went down, and I have a little bit of explanation about that, and someone can correct me if I'm wrong. So the employees went down and our attendance went up, but especially take a look at, you know, two thousand compared to two thousand twenty-one, our attendance is almost double, but we have three less positions that are full-time. So what happened, and, and my explanation was, this is what I heard, so around two thousand and six, I believe there was a, a meeting, council members, the park board, the zoo, they all got together, and they had to decide what to do because the zoo was operating at a close to half a million dollar deficit. So they decided that they're going to allow the zoo to only go into debt, you know, deficit by two hundred fifty thousand or more. So as the price of, you know, feed goes up and, you know, utilities go up, the only way they could cut money is to cut employees, and that's what they did. However, the financial situation is a little bit better now. So, uh, and then, oh, and here's the thing too, another thing, because we have only seven employees now that are full-time, we have a very good chance of losing our accreditation. Uh, next slide, please. So, um, the accrediting agency said things like we have inadequate staffing. You know, our zoo contains six hundred and sixty-three specimens, a hundred and seven species, and fifteen acres. Six full-time people, and there's safety rules in place. I mean, you can't just have the zoo open with, you know, teenage employees that are seasonal workers. You have to have people trained with the animals. It's not just something that anyone could do. So they need at least a minimum of a full-time keeper, and the way I understand it, and I think Jamie's on here, she could talk about it too, I think we, you know, we, we are at risk of losing our certification. Uh, next slide, please. And so this is, you know, this was on, this was in the packet as well, but it's pretty hard to understand what's going on here, and I kind of looked into it. So the way the decisions were made to see whether or not the zoo is profitable, if you look at the first two lines, it says revenues and expenditures for zoo operations. Well, those were always in the red. And even this year, which was a pretty good year, it's in the red, because this is just revenues at the gate versus expenses running the entire zoo, feeding all the animals, all the staff, et cetera. But when you ta- take a look at the concessions, and especially this year, so concession-wise, they made a hundred and ninety thousand dollars. However, in the past, no one would look at that as part of, you know, the zoo finances. They'd say, well, no, it's sixty-five thousand in the whole. Well, not this year because they made profit a hundred and ninety thousand from the concessions. And then, uh, Shannon did, Shannon Easton, our Assistant Superintendent, did a calculation on the parking, and it was very, she did it very kind of like, just very conservatively, how much parking came from zoo traffic only. So she eliminated all of Port County people and all Michigan City people because she thought those guys had stickers. They do have, uh, attendance figures on, you know, who attends outside of Newport County. And so, you know, they, she did averages, whatever, and she, she figured out that this year, two hundred eighty-two thousand dollars came from zoo parking. So in fact, next slide, Caleb. So if you take a look, next, it's all right, it's the same thing. Yeah, so if you take a look, I mean, when you add these numbers up, you know, the zoo is in the black by five hundred seven thousand this year. And this was a great year. I mean, part of the difference, I mean, twenty twenty, you can't really look at, I don't think, because of COVID, but twenty twenty-one, we had a great year, but we are understaffed, and, you know, we could probably use even more people, I think, at the zoo, but that's not for me to say right now. You know, the resolution, not this one, but the next one coming up, is going to talk about an additional zookeeper. But I want to point out the hundred and ninety thousand from the concessions, so that's, that's what the ask is going to be, because the, the cat house in the zoo, uh, we can, we can turn off the PowerPoint now, that's, that's about it. Thank you. So the cat house in the zoo, uh, you know, they got funding from all kinds of sources, and maybe Jamie can talk about that, but they did fall short because prices went up, et cetera. I mean, they, they really, you know, couldn't get it done, so they just, they're asking to move some of that concession money they made into a fund to help fund the big cat house. And so if I said anything wrong, perhaps, uh, Jamie could fix it, and I'm not sure if she's on there or not, but, um-
She, she is, so. Thank you, um, thank you, Councilwoman, um, Jacobs. So, um, any comments from the public, and I know that we do have some people from the zoo, um, that are with us tonight, if they would like to speak. Uh, now would be a good time, and then, um, when council comments, they can ask questions as well. Hey, got a whole group of you. Good evening, y'all. Any questions from the, from the, uh, public? Any comments from the zoo, um, staff administration? All right, well, I'm going to go to council comments and see if they have any questions for you. Um, yes, Councilman Don Provalinsky.
Yeah, first of all, I'd like to be added as a, uh, co-sponsor uh, to this, to this ordinance. And ju- just a couple of comments after reading the, uh, information that I have, is, uh, I, I guess I'm kind of, kind of alarmed that we got that report from the, uh, uh, what's that, the federal government on their twenty nineteen uh, inspection of the zoo. Yeah, or the Zo- the Zoological Association of America. And, you know, it says, uh, "One concern shared by the inspection team and the accreditation committee is the inadequate staffing at Washington Park Zoo. The staff is not adequate for the size and composition of the animal collection and the care required. The footprint of distribution of the collection housing also added to present staff challenges." And, and then it goes on to say, uh, you know, how, how things are, they got six hundred and sixty-three specimens, hundred and seventy, hundred and seven specimens on a footprint of fifteen acres, and that. What my concern is, and why I read that, is if we knew that there was a concern back in twenty nineteen, why are we addressing it in twenty twenty-two? That's three years. To me, that's putting this group of people in harm's way by not having the zoo adequately staffed, knowing that it should have been staffed, because that's what the concerns are. That's what the concern was in twenty nineteen. Uh, I don't like when that type of management practice is, uh, I guess, uh, incorporated or being used. This should have been brought to the city council back in twenty nineteen to get this zoo staffed up to where it needs to be, to be within requirements of the federal government. to be within requirements of the federal government. You know, are we dealing with OSHA regulations also here? I don't know how the OSHA fits in with zoos. But I know if OSHA would step in and say, hey, you need twenty people to do this job. We told you to do that three years ago, but you still haven't done it. I think you might be getting fined by the federal government for doing that type of management. So I did like that part of this, uh, information. And that's why we, and and I'm gonna tell, a- ask the council that we need, we need to get this staffing up to where it needs to be for the safety and concern of the employees that work at the zoo. Because they're the ones that have to deal with these animals three hundred and sixty-five days out of the air. They have to go into and deal with the tigers and the bears and all these big animals that, you know, I think there's supposed to be two per cage or two people in the house when they're dealing with these animals. And if they're only doing it with one person right now, I'm gonna tell you, you don't do that. We cannot do that. And we just need to get this staffed up and do what's right for these people that work there. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you, um, Councilman, um, Don Privolinski. And just, um, as we're making our comments, um, realizing, and and I'll be pretty relaxed on comments for, for these two since they're kind of, they go hand to hand. Um, but the actual, um, there's another ordinance right after this that is, is specific to adding those additional um, headcounts. Uh, this one is, is definitely for the, um, uh, big cat zoo exhibit.
Big cat, yeah.
Just to make sure that everybody knows that they don't confuse them, but I would like to be added as a sponsor for this one as well, and I think Councilman Bryant Dabney had a comment.
Exact same thing, and he, uh, wanted to be added as a sponsor. Thank you.
All right, yes, Councilwoman Jacobs.
Yes, I, I'm, you know, and I didn't know what to do because their financing really has to do with both, both of the, uh, ordinances. So I just kind of thought I'd get in the beginning. So they do have some money because they did a great job on concessions this year because they had incredible numbers, but they want to use some of that money to just finish up that big cat project, which looks like it's really close to being a goal.
Any additional comments?
Madam Chair?
Yes, Councilman, I'm Paul Privolinski.
Yes, uh, I, uh, as I'm looking at this, I was wondering if the, uh, since this is a capital project, was there any discussion with having, having the, uh, um, using TIP money on it? Because I do know that the TIP area encompasses all of Washington Park and our beach areas. So I believe that we need to look at all our funding sources and possibly not stripping the funding, but making sure that there's funding there so we don't have, uh, run into the red at any time. Because didn't, uh, and didn't we just transfer money within the park system of, um, we were told they had the best year ever because we increased the parking fees down there? Well, maybe we need to look at allocating some of that funding and, and, uh, uh, doing something in an ordinance form that money is provided. But I think that we allocated money and there's money sitting around, um, to get this project done. And so at, at this time, I am gonna make a request that this be tabled on first reading till our next council meeting to get some of these questions answered, um, through the park department and through, uh, our, uh, excuse me, through our controller's office on a, a funding mechanism for this. Thank you.
We have a motion on the table. Is there a second? All right, there, there is no second, um, um, so there's no second to table this. Any, um, additional comments, um, from the council? Councilman Matt, did you have a comment?
Uh, yeah, just really quick, Mr. Fitzpatrick was before me too. He had that little hand up.
I'm sorry, I didn't see.
So I just wanted to recognize that, but, uh, just a couple of just bullet points. When I hear, uh, these great things that Dalia, that slide showed, uh, the growth that came out of that one year is just phenomenal. You don't see that in many other private or public sectors like that. Uh, it would be an investment. If you see that type of growth and we know what's coming, with the problems we've had at the beach with parking, where we had to raise the prices, uh, and we still had maxed out on it, um, we could take care of a lot of underperformance with people. And with the, with the topic we're talking about, the, the big cat, you know, i- increasing the, uh, quality of our offering, uh, with the, with the animals. Um, it's just no reason for us not to aggressively, uh, go toward the future and see how big and nice and, and great of a diamond we can have with the zoo. We've got a great thing going. It was great when I was a child, and we've got an opportunity to, to get in front of this right now, so I'm all for it. Thank you for that information, Dalia.
All right, Councilman, thank you. Um, Councilman Sean Fitzpatrick.
Uh, thank you, Madam Chair. I, I just have one quick question. I don't know if someone from the, uh, zoo can answer this. What was the, the main driver for that increase in concessions this year or this past year? Thank you.
Hi, Sean. So the main driver was the gift shop. We sold out of everything that we possibly could put into the gift shop this year. The people were interested in purchasing anything and everything. I had stock that was like a couple of years old, and I put it out and fly off the shelves. So the gift shop just did insanely good for us this year.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments from the council? And I will make one. Um, the, uh, redevelopment commission at our, uh, meeting on January twenty-fourth, we did, uh, approve, um, additional funding for the big cat exhibit um, and have made, um, significant, um, um, I'm trying to get the numbers right now so I can tell you. I'm trying to go through my notes, but, um, there were, um, monies. But one thing I would like to say is just congratulations to the staff because they went out and find, found additional monies with the increase in cost over, um, the last two years with COVID, um, and construction costs to get this done, which is a, a great exhibit. But, um, the redevelopment commission did approve additional funding, um, at the last meeting. So I did want to, um, share that. I just, I will have to look up the, uh, information to provide it and, and council comments. Um, any, any additional comments from the council? Yes, Councilman Gene Simmons.
Uh, I just want to interject that they also received twelve thousand dollar, uh, donation from, uh, one of the owners of the Super Boat Race back in the summer. Which was great.
All right, thank you. Uh, any, yes. Yes, Councilman.
Yeah, I have, I have a que- I have a question about why, what was the problem with the redevelopment commission, uh, picking up the total tab on that? The remainder of the balance on the, uh, uh, cat house.
Uh, you can ask that question, um, of, of, uh, the, uh, Chair or Skylar, but, um, just like with anything else, if it's presented that way, um.
Oh, that's the way it was presented in a certain amount?
We, that's what was presented to our board, and that's what we voted on. And, um, and it was a significant amount. I wish I could tell you the exact amount, but I will before the end of this council meeting.
Okay, thank you.
All right, any additional comments? If not, this will be held over for second reading at our ne- next council meeting. All right, uh, yeah, uh, Ms. Nyla, um, our next ordinance on first reading.
Ordinance on first reading by title only, approving additional appropriation in the budget of the park operating fund for additional full-time zookeeper. And this is also introduced by Ms. Jacobs.
Yes, um, comments from the sponsor?
Uh, yes, so again, they're not even asking us for additional money. They're just asking to move money that they have in different accounts so that they can fund this additional zookeeper, which we desperately need. And I know I'll be willing to think about adding another ord- uh, another ordinance to hire some more help because I do think they need more help out there. But this is crucial. So they've got money, they just want to be able to move it from one fund to another. So that's how I understand this. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, comments from the public? Comments from the public? All right, comments from the council? Yes, Councilman Don Privolinski, then Councilman Sean Fitzpatrick, then Councilman Bryant Dabney.
Okay, yeah, I have a question for Jamie from the park, from the zoo. There you go. Yeah, what accounts, you're taking money from other accounts, and it doesn't show us what accounts that's coming from. What accounts are you taking the money from? And are you gonna be back at the end of the year asking the city council for money to fill in those accounts? What, what accounts is this money coming from?
I think Shannon's on the, on the, uh, online too. As far as I know, we were taking some money from our seasonal balance. Um, but I'm not sure the remaining balance is coming from her office.
Controller Hoffmaster has her hand up to speak.
Yeah, um, this isn't coming from any, any accounts that are currently, um, funded. This is coming from the unappropriated balance of the park operating fund. So we're, they're not taking money from any place else that's been budgeted. They're asking for additional monies to be budgeted. So this comes from the, um, unappropriated balance of the park, which is, um, with the numbers right now as they are, um, is about eight hundred thousand dollars.
And, and then also, uh, with this type of request, why wasn't this brought up during budget time? Why is it brought up shortly after, you know, we're into February? I mean, we knew that this was going on for three years. Why wasn't this brought up during budget time where, you know, we could have talked about it then, taking care of it back then, instead of wait until now? I guess that question's for, aside for Jamie, because Jamie just gives her budget and hopes she can get what she can get. But I guess that question's for, uh, Controller Hoffmaster. Why wasn't that brought up during the budget time?
We, we budgeted what the park requested.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Um, Councilman Sean Fitzpatrick.
Um, thank you, Madam Chair. Um, so I wanted to ask, um, how many zookeepers are there currently? And would one additional be sufficient? And the, uh, second question, would, what was, what are those daily tasks for the zookeeper? Just for the public knowledge, thank you.
Uh, we have, uh, five full-time keepers. Uh, we try to have support staff, which is ours, what they call seasonal staff. Um, the problem is we're not getting applications we used to get, uh, to have the support staff. There's also limitations on how many hours they can work per year. Um, and because of that, we cannot train them into those dangerous animals. Uh, but keeper's job range can be from animal care to painting, um, groundkeeping, clogging the zoo. Um, we, we need about four full-time support staff members a day just to do the basic animal task. And that's with nothing else happening, uh, no school groups, um, no deliveries, no animal emergencies, no weather emergencies. Um, like Don said, we work, you know, all year, holidays included, um. But, yeah, and, you know, it's after hours, you know, things always pop up, so, um, we just need more staff to, to, you know, we're making it work now, um, but we're spending most of our time, making sure we don't have any, uh, safety issues. Then we, what we're spending on improvements and getting ready for opening. And, um, that's just not how we want to continue operating to improve the zoo in the future.
Thank you, Jamie. All right, um, Councilman, um, Bryant Dabney.
I just want to be added as a co-sponsor, and then also give thanks to all of the folks that are working down there at that zoo. They're doing a great job. Great job.
Agreed. Uh, uh, Yvonne, uh, Controller Hoffmaster, did you have something else to add? I see your hand up.
Oh, no, let me take it down.
All right, I'm Councilman Paul Privolinski. Did you have something?
Yes, I got a question, uh, for, uh, Yvonne. Um, is this appropriation is out of the new money, right? Is it, does this money, any of this money on an unappropriated balance from last year? Because you didn't reconcile the, uh, money yet, right?
Yeah, this is exactly the money that's left from last year.
Okay.
That's what the unappropriated balance is.
Okay, I just want to clarify that, thank you. And, uh, so now, also, the park department gets two, um, tax settlements a year, don't they?
That is correct.
They, they, yeah, in the, in the, in last year, they got one point six million, correct?
That sounds about right.
Right. So in conjunction with what, uh, Councilman Don Prisvolinsky is, uh, saying, is asking his point of view and, uh, pursuing that on the same line is that I believe that we need to look at this, and I have questions in my mind why it wasn't presented at that time. So now you actually have extra money in that budget going into this year because that money that you're appropriating is from last year. I just want to clarify that with everybody so they understand what's going on here with this transfer. It's last year's money. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman, um, Paul. Councilman Don Privolinski.
Yeah, just one more comment on this. I, I, I know, I know that we're, we're looking for one zookeeper. Hold on just, hold on one second, please.
Madam Chair, I don't know if you noticed, um, Councilwoman Tillman and Councilman Mack had their hands up as well.
Thank you. I'm trying to keep up. So we'll let Councilman Don, um, finish.
I'm back, I'm back. I had to shut the, I'm sorry, I had to shut the phone off.
All right.
But anyway, with, 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 with that being known of the, this eight hundred thousand dollars and the unappropriated balance being brought from twenty twenty-one into twenty twenty-two, and the zoo's gonna be getting another tax settlement. So right now, we're looking at eight hundred thousand for a zookeeper at seventy-three thousand. I, I don't know why the park department isn't asking, you know, for two zookeepers and staff this up to where they need to be staffed. I know that's not what we're talking about right here. I'm just making that a comment that if we're, if we want to do the right thing, let's staff it to where it needs to be staffed. Because to me, the funding is there. There's eight hundred thousand dollars there. So if you get another zookeeper, all you're gonna do is take another seventy-five thousand out of that, and you're still gonna have, you know, if you take two zookeepers, it says one fifty, you still got six hundred and fifty thousand dollars out of the unappropriated balance coming from twenty twenty-one. Just a, uh, just a comment that I hope, uh, some folks listen to. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, Councilwoman, uh, Tracy Tillman.
Um, thank you, Madam Chair. President, I would just like to know, um, for the zoo, the full-time zookeeper, um, do they require any special training or skills, um, to be a zookeeper? Or qualifications?
Well, we, you, uh, basically, it'd be nice to have you with, uh, biology degrees, law degree. Um, but for us, which is a small zoo, uh, we like to try to promote within first um, because that hands-on training, you just can't beat that, especially when we're, you know, we're such a small staff. If, if people are willing to stick with us and to learn the skills, um, hands-on, we try to promote them first. Um, but, you know, have education never hurts. And it's a continued education. Job never, never ends. We learn something new every day.
Thank you. Yeah.
All right, Councilman Michael Mack.
All right, real quick, I want to be added as a co-sponsor to this one also. And I also want to thank all those people in that room that are doing a, a serious job of taking care of animals while understaffed. No one could have foresaw the post-COVID rush. But now that we see it, now that we know what our summers are going to be like, I, I'm looking forward to an aggressive staffing proposal that could set us for a destination. I mean, you know, when you're sitting on a, a good business opportunity, a good educational opportunity, we should be maximizing and it comes with the people. So, you know, I've always had this idea of we should be sending our own seventh, eighth and ninth graders to our zoo before it even opens to the public, like a soft opening. We've got such education that we could be giving our children just privately with, with a great staff like that, if it's staffed up. We could be just doing so much more. We got to have a vision of what we can do, not look at last year's budget and make an opinion of, well, we can't do this. We can look forward to the future and, and start planning on some stuff and adjust, adjust on the high end instead of planning always on the low end. So thanks to you again, you know, maximizing gift shop. If you can make all the money selling two-year-old merchandise, what could you make by some creativity? If we let you guys creativity run, I'm not creative, but how much more could be made? It got to be at least double. Just, just my, my two cents. So thank you guys for all that. You got a fan here and I, I think you got a few other fans. We just want to do it the right way. But we, we're sitting on a gold mine there and I would love to see us, you know, try to maximize and push it. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Mack. Councilwoman Jigas.
Yes, so to answer Councilwoman Tillman's question, I did include, there was a job description in that big packet that I sent last week. But they also asked to get a, what do they call this, zoo maintenance craftsman? And that's not on this ordinance at all, but that may be upcoming. They, a specialized person to work on maintenance and maybe they can address that too while they're on here. Can you tell us about that master craftsman zookeeper?
Oh yeah, that's the same position that we need, being a 93-year-old facility. Things break down all the time, it's like owning a home. So it, it's tough to find a, a person with the skills we need, paying just above minimum wage. And they expect them to come back each year or to be laid off six months without getting an appointment. So it definitely is a full-time position added to it. So we hopefully back in June for next year's budget. Right now, we use a lot of volunteers and the park bench staff when they can squeeze us in. But with all the jobs that they have too, it's hard and we have a long waiting queue list of tasks we want to get done.
Thank you. Any additional questions from the council? Yes, Councilman Gene Simmons.
I too would just encourage them to bring the zoo up to fully staff per Zaya's, Zaya's request. Listening to this, sounds like our team down there is almost at risk. We need to fix it.
Thank you, Councilman.
Or should I say support it?
Thank you, Councilman Simmons. I would like to be added as a sponsor, co-sponsor as well. And just to add, at the last redevelopment commission meeting, we approved $100,000 dollars towards the Big Cat exhibit. And on September 13th of last year, we approved $250,000 to the Big Cat exhibit for a total of $350,000 to the Big Cat exhibit. I just wanted to update the council that that was the commitment over the last six months. It's been $350,000 from the RDC. All right, any, we will hold this over for a second reading at our next council meeting. Thank you for all the comments, everybody. Thank you to the zoo crew. Thank you for being here tonight. All right. Moving to new business now. The county council has one appointment to the tree board that expires. This is FYI, March 15th. The incumbent is Laura Henderson. The appointment is made by the neighborhood association. Have we received any thing, Ms. Nyala, from the neighborhood association?
Well, let's see, and this is for which one, the tree board?
Yes.
Okay, yeah, I have Rodney McCormick and...
Well, this appointment is made by the neighborhood association for the tree board.
Right, well, I haven't, we usually, someone usually on the council reaches out to them. And I have not received anything.
So this is a notice to the public that there is an expiration, March 15, 2022. The incumbent is Laura Henderson and this appointment is made by the neighborhood association based on the, the ordinance. So that's an FYI. The next.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
What neighborhood association is that?
I knew you were going to ask that.
I think, I think it's Elston Grove, but I just wanted to verify.
You're right, you're correct. Councilwoman, that's Elston Grove.
Councilman Dapney, would you read, feel, feel free, would you mind reaching out to them in the clerk's office? If you would reach out to the Elston Grove Neighborhood Association to see if they're going to put forth a, a nomination, the incumbent is Laura Henderson. Before, because we, to get it on the agenda, we would like to have that by next Wednesday before noon. Thank you. The next FYI, so this one is, we all received correspondence. This is for the appointment to the Michigan City Fire Merritt Commission. Mr. Ricky Jackson sent us a letter. His, his term is at the end of this year. So this would be a replacement. Anybody who would be interested in being on the Fire Merritt Commission that you will need to fill out a council form, board and commission form and have it turned in no later than noon next Wednesday, a week from tomorrow, so second, the ninth. And if the council so desires, we will, we will do nominations and the vote that night since it's a resignation and it's an empty seat. So anyone in the public who is interested should get that in by Wednesday of next week by noon. And again, that is for the Fire Merritt Commission. And just to add a little bit to that, that board and commission handles testing, hiring. They put in a lot of work and effort. They grade tests, they're there for the physical agility. It's, it's a board that is a, is a working board, just like the police commission. So if you have the time, you know, for it, it does take a lot of work. So I just want to stress that when you put your application in, this is a group that is on the hook to do a lot of different things. So just FYI. Finished business, the council has the following appointments to the, the social status of African-American males. We have minority health partners. I know the ministerial alliance, association, the, the verbiage on what their name is, we'll deal with that. And then we have Michigan City Area Schools and then we have the NAACP, which had a resignation. I know that we received a correspondence from Kimberly Williams, who may be out in the, in the online. But Ms. Nyala, have we received any letters other than Ms. Williams?
No, we have not.
So we have not had, received anything from the NAACP?
No.
From Michigan City Area Schools? Or from the minority health partners?
No.
All right, but we have from the ministerial association, is, is Ms. Williams on? Pastor Kimberly Williams? Yes, I will, please, Ms. Williams, if you would like to make a comment.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Oh, okay. Okay, hello, everybody. I hope you stay warm, get home. Oh, you're already at home, you're on Zoom. Before this snowstorm, I would just like to say that we sent in a letter and I will be taking over Pastor Jakar's position on the, on the social status committee. And like you said, there, there was a little discrepancy in the name, but we'll, we'll get that all settled.
All right, thank you. Thank you for that. So I would entertain a, a nomination for Pastor Kimberly Williams.
Nominate Pastor Kimberly, Pastor Williams.
All right, thank you, Mr. Mack. Do we have a second, second by Councilman Don Privilinski? Does anybody oppose having the vote this evening since it's, it's passed due? All right, Ms. Nyala on the roll. I'm muted. Mr. Simmons?
Aye.
Ms. Jigas?
Aye.
Mr. Paul Presvolinsky?
Ayes.
Ms. Tillman?
Aye.
Mr. Dapney?
Aye.
Mr. Fitzpatrick?
Aye.
Mr. Mack?
Aye.
Ms. Deitch?
Aye.
And Mr. Don Presvolinsky?
Aye.
We have nine in favor and no one opposed. Thank you, Pastor Kimberly Williams.
Thank you.
All right, now we're going to open up for public comment. Are there any, Caleb, is there anyone from the public that would like to speak this evening?
We have no hands.
Really? That's, all right, no, no comments from the public. All right, council comments. Council comments, any comments from the council? Yes, Councilman Don Privilinski.
A few comments. First of all, I want to comment on the first attempt by the street department to clean Franklin Street and Michigan Boulevard during our last snow event that we had with this piece of equipment that was purchased. And I think that the street department did a very good job. It was, it was a learning experience and it's going to be a learning experience. And I know that Sean is going to be trial and error with different pieces of equipment to see what's most efficient for the city. But I can tell you by, by doing this work that people are not walking out on the streets, they're walking down the sidewalks like they should be. And I'm very proud to be a, be a city council member and to be one of the members that voted for it and sponsored that ordinance. So it's, it'll be getting better as time goes on. The next thing, because I reported on it at the last council meeting, was the bill that came out of the state house, which was state bill 1077 with the handguns and not having to have permits for handguns. Well, I just want to thank, and I don't know her personally, but I want to thank State Senator Liz Brown that she was the chair of the committee that, after she heard the bill, she did not let it, did not let it go to the state senate. So that was, I want to thank her for that. And finally, I want to thank the Dawn, the bold, the bald, coming out of the, the assistant city clerk. She has moved on to the police department now and she's out of the clerk's office. But Dawn, if you're listening, I just want to thank you for all your dedication, your professionalism and friendship that you had and the wonderful greeting, smile, and may I help you all the time with whatever you needed out of the clerk's office. So I just want to say thank you very much, Dawn. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Councilman Don Privilinski. Any other council comments? Yes, Councilman Bryant Dapney.
Yeah, real quick regarding the, the ordinance with the, the cleaning of the sidewalks that Councilman Don Presvolinsky just mentioned. We really need to consider the equipment. I know we went and bought something for about 19,000 or so. When the estimates of what would actually be needed, those Kubodas was much higher than that. From what I saw, I believe, and what I'm, sorry, what I heard rather, from people that were operating that is that thing is where the rider is actually out in the elements while they're, they're doing that riding to, to clean the sidewalk. So they take a ride all the way down Franklin Street, all the way down Michigan Boulevard, front and back. With somebody being out in the elements, it's probably not the smartest thing. So we really need to think about getting the proper equipment for these, these guys to do it. You know, one person said it's almost a residential vehicle to be able to clean something out in front of your house. But it's going to be rough, you know, being sitting outside without an enclosed cab. You know, to be riding up and down Franklin and Michigan Boulevard trying to clean the sidewalks. So hopefully we can come together as a council and make sure we get the proper equipment for them to do this the right way. You know, with the intention of cleaning those sidewalks. So they can really, really, you know, get this done and we can act our, our, our workers out there.
Thank you, Councilman Dapney. Yes, Councilwoman Delia Ziegas.
Hey there, I just want to talk a little bit about, we're having a vaccination and COVID testing event at the Salvation Army. And thank you for, Caleb, for putting that up there. So starting unfortunately tomorrow during the, the snowstorm through Saturday, no appointment is necessary. You can just walk in. It's open from noon to 8:00 PM, Wednesday through Saturday at the Salvation Army on 12th and Franklin Street. And vaccines are there, rapid PCR tests available. They'll do the kids, five and older, modern, so all the information's up there. I do have this up on my website. But they're having an event right here downtown in Michigan City and Salvation Army. So just wanted to let you know, it's still here, it's still not too late to get vaccinated because we don't know what the future holds. All right, thank you.
Thank you. Any additional council comments?
Madam Chair?
Yes, Councilman Paul.
Thank you. I would like to make a comment on reverting back to some questions that I asked and about the, the finances. And you know, I, I think that we should, we should be aware of the finances. And that's one thing that I try to, try to bring out to the other council members about just like with this money appropriation that we have in front of us tonight, this money and where it came from and it's last year's money. And I, I'm not trying to say that we shouldn't spend money, but you need to know where the money came from and where it was going and how much you have in the pot. So I, I just want to make that point because I, I didn't appreciate some of the comments that were made about, I'm not trying to nickel and dime, I'm personally looking at the money so that there's money there and why things weren't brought in front of us earlier. And I just think that you need to know where that money's coming from. So also, we have another issue coming in front of us that this low, low, uh, low it tax that they want to increase it to, so I guess the county council is going to send us every taxing entity in, in the county a, they want a enabling resolution passed by the communities that are going to benefit from the low it tax. Well, don't be it. So that's going to be coming in front of us. And we need to start thinking about how much money we need. I'm going to try to get some information for that and have a, get some kind of meeting together with the finance committee and looking at this and how much money it'll generate, what we could use the money for, things of that nature. But also, I tonight want to thank all the first responders, all our emergency service workers, which includes EMT, first responders, the police. first responders, the police, our healthcare workers who are in the front lines with this pandemic with COVID and go to work every day to deal with giving us services. I was, I was ill last week and got medical attention. But as I was receiving my medical attention, I just thought that here these people are helping us going at risk every day when they report. So I just want to let people, remind people that they're, they are essential, they're very important, but they are our heroes. And I think that I, I just want to give some kudos to them. And just like I will say concerning COVID, if you feel ill, get medical attention right away. Do not wait. Don't take, don't wait an extra day. So there's guidelines that people don't talk about that you don't hear every day. And last week, I was giving a, what they call a infusion. And you have a timeline that, that is between when you get tested to seven to 10-day window. So anyway, yeah, we can get vaccinated, but we still have to deal with it. And we have, still have to deal with, just if you feel ill, get to medical attention ASAP. Thank you. And Madam Chair.
Thank you, Councilman Paul Privilinski. Any other comments from the council? All right, I have a couple of items. So just a reminder that there was an executive session that was sent out for Thursday for the council at 6 o'clock. Also, there is a, another boards and commissions workshop on February 23rd for Zoom at 5:30 to cover Robert's Rules of Order and also to allow Controller Hoffmaster to talk a little bit about accounting and accounts payable for those boards that receive pay. And lastly, one thing that I shared on the at the finance committee meeting is that anything that's financial, I would like Controller Hoffmaster to send that to, directly to the finance committee to put it on their agenda so that those things can be covered on their agenda regardless if they are already on the council agenda. You don't have to wait for it to be on the agenda for it to go to the finance committee. I know there was one additional, I think ordinance or a resolution that was submitted that wasn't on this week's agenda, but they do need to go to the finance committee so that we can have that on their, on their standing agenda before every council meeting. So with that, I would entertain, oh, safety, please, everybody. We got two waves of snow that says that it's coming. So anywhere from, I've seen anywhere from five to 20 inches over the next couple of days. So please stay safe. I know as Councilman Paul Privilinski shared too, we have our, our first responders. I know that during storms, everybody, you know, our home, and we have some people who have to be on the road that are first responders. So again, I just, you know, send positive thoughts to those workers and support them in any way we can. So I entertain a motion up.
Madam Chairman, yeah, just one more comment. And I know that we were going to talk, we were going to bring it up. Is when that the, the ordinances and resolutions that go out Wednesday morning or, yeah. Remember, Madam President, you were going to talk about that? If you'd like to talk about that, yeah.
For bringing that up. Thank you, Councilman Privilinski. So yes, for, for our ordinances, for sponsorship of our ordinances, we, you know, waiting till we, having them on Wednesday to get a sponsor is probably too late to get them to the council members. I know that several of us you know, stepped up to do that, but we really should. And I shared at the, at the finance committee meeting, should be getting those, you know, Monday or Tuesday to give us some, some time to at least review them. But some of them were, you know, pretty thorough and that timeline was pretty short for the council members. And, you know, to have five or six items thrown at us at the same time is probably not efficient. But I know that there were some items that we had to get, get on the agenda. So for all boards and commissions, the redevelopment commission, planning commission, the controller's office, fire, whoever it is. If you would like a sponsor from the city council, but you need to get it on the agenda, please try to get those to us, you know, a couple of days prior to the deadline. So that we have ample time to review it and not just stick our name on there to get it on there to have the conversation. So we would appreciate that because our goal is to be productive, but it's, you know, when it's at the nth hour is kind of hard for us. So again, thank you. And I will entertain a motion.
Motion to adjourn.
All right. You all have a wonderful meeting as adjourned. Have a wonderful few days and stay safe out there. Thank you, everybody.
Stay healthy. Bye-bye.